This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
We knew that would be the case as we continue to move forward. And so I appreciate the adaptability that we've been seeing through administration and our instructors, aides, et cetera. So thank you to everyone on that. We do have an 11 o'clock special board meeting after this to talk about the 2021 school year. Pat, so that you know, I do have a medical appointment that I have to get to, not COVID-related, which had been postponed twice. So if I have to leave that second meeting a little bit early, I would ask that you take that over for me, please. With that, we'll start with a pledge. And Mark, I'm going to ask you to start us off with that, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Betty Mannion?
Here.
Pat there?
Here.
Mark Paulabinski?
I see Mark.
Mark?
He's muted, I think. I can see him shaking. He got his thumbs up.
Sandy Robinson?
Here.
Daleph?
Here.
Steve Johnson?
Here.
Okay, with that, as for approval of the agenda, is there a motion? So move. Motion by... Second by...
Second.
Betty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We'll now move into our meeting norms. I'll start with the first one, then we'll just rotate through. Be prepared, stay informed, listen to others, and be open to differing opinions and perspectives. Being inquisitive, reflective, and respectful, checking our biases and agendas at the door. We will thoughtfully and objectively discuss the facts of the situation and not personalize issues or policies. We will ensure open and clear communications and make transparency. No surprises.
Remain objective, forward-thinking, and open-minded. Respect the opinions of others.
Sandy?
Maintaining professional relationships is key. Know and respect the roles and responsibilities of the board, governing, administration, tactical, and staff operational.
Pat?
Can you hear me okay?
You can see it?
Yeah, I can see it. I didn't know if my mic has been giving me trouble, so I'll read it. Start on time, end on time, stay on task.
Thank you. Steve?
When a board discusses... When a board decision is made, we accept and abide by the decisions both publicly and privately. We accomplish more united than divided.
And Mark?
I am protect the expectation of confidentiality of all topics addressed and discussions held in closed sessions. Did you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Well done. Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We'll start with a July 14th, 2020 regular board meeting.
May I motionally approve?
Motion by Mr. Hackett. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a...
Second by Dale. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would propose an amendment, just modification, on page three in the Chain Exploration Center Annual Report section. The second sentence note, Megan is noting that the allowable carryover limit of budgeted funds not spent was waived, and I would suggest an amendment to change the word "budgeted" to read "federal subgrant." Because she was at that point talking about the federal subgrant budget and rather than a school district budget.
Okay, any other discussion? Pardon?
Which...
I wasn't sure which approval of the minutes it was that she was...
Is it the July 14th?
July 14th.
Yes.
Yes, July 14th, page three, under the CEC Annual Report. Last sentence before the parenthetical sentence, she also noted that the allowable carryover limit of the federal subgrant budgeted funds. Any discussion?
You could actually remove the word "budgeted," I would say, and just say of the federal subgrant funds not spent. Or maybe leave it in. Either way would be fine.
Okay, "subgrant," the proposals, "carryover limit of the federal subgrant funds not spent" was waived due to the pandemic, et cetera. Any further discussion? Does the motion still hold with that adjustment?
Yes. It does. It does for me.
Who made that motion, Sandy?
Steve Hackett.
Steve Hackett, you made that motion. Does your motion stand with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Daleph, is your second still hold?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with the amendment to the minutes. July 20th, special board meeting. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
By Sandy, by Steve. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. The July 24th special board meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion. So move.
Second.
The second was Sandy?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the August 7th special board meeting.
Do we have July 31st?
July 31st.
July 31st special board meeting.
So move.
By Mr. Hackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy Robinson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, the August 7th, 2020 special board meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Is that you, Sandy, on the second?
Yes, it was.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. If you seem to be hearing a delay when I'm calling the question, it's purposeful in case someone needs to unmute their microphone. So don't think it's your connection. With that, we'll move on to communications. Ms. Rosari?
We had one communication, the thank you note from Garrett Baum, I believe is how you pronounce it, and it should be in your packet. And as far as a district administrator's report, I don't have a report for the board this month. With the amount of special meetings and communications that we've had, I don't think it's necessary.
So the district administrator's report is everything's going wonderfully, huh?
As good as we can be.
Okay. Very good. Board reports. So we have our upcoming meetings, the August 14th special board meeting, that's at 11 o'clock today. The August 17th Strategic Planning Committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. The August 21 special board meeting at 10:00 a.m. The August 28th special board meeting at 10:00 a.m. And the September 8th, 2020 regular board meeting at 5:15 p.m. With that, we'll move on to the Personnel Committee.
That would be me. The Personnel Committee met on August 5th at 1:00 in the afternoon, and all the members of the committee were present along with several other members of the board. And there were two items on the agenda, and the first was stipends for the additional time that's been put in this summer by our teachers and building administrators to plan and deal with our pandemic and how we're going to go forward. So we discussed stipends that would be appropriate for them to compensate them for, or try to compensate them for the additional, many additional hours that they have put in. And the money for that, to pay them, would come from the CARES Act, which comes from the federal government to help us with any costs in addition to any dollars we need to spend on preventative health issues like hot spots, Plexiglas, viters, technology devices, anything we need to help us go forward. And the second item on the agenda was the discussion of an additional nurse for a one-year contract this year for the 2021 school year who would help with our pandemic response, which could be medical tracing, management, helping the staff and student with training and protocol. The board decided to go forward with both of these, so we have two recommendations to the board that we would like to bring forward. The first recommendation is that we approve the CARES Act spending for the stipends for the teachers and the building administrators and any additional equipment that we need to help us with this pandemic here.
Okay, and as a point of clarification, that is for time beyond the contractual days?
Right. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Very good. That being a committee recommendation to the board, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? There being none. Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Aye.
Mark Paulabinski?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Daleph?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and the second motion or recommendation?
The second recommendation is that we hire a full-time school nurse for a one-year position here for the school district.
Okay, that being a committee recommendation, it needs no second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Aye.
Mark Paulabinski?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Daleph?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, administration, HVAC ionization.
In your packet, you should have a memo from Carl. And there's an overview in regards to the HVAC needlepoint ionization system by Global Plasma Solutions. They call GPS is the acronym. So the needlepoint ionization system, it creates millions of positively and negatively charged ions that reduce airborne particles and pathogens through a process called agglomeration. These ions take hydrogen away from pathogens, causing them to die and leading to much cleaner and healthier indoor air. The systems are similar in price to the UVC lighting. However, maintenance is very minimal, and operating costs are limited to the electricity needed to power the system. There's no lamps to replace unlike the UVC systems. Below, there's some updated testing related to COVID with the GPS system. Paragraph C, for years, the GPS system has been used on most private airplanes to disinfect the air that the passengers breathe. One of GPS's large aviation customers is the U.S. Air Force, and they recently worked with two separate independent organizations, Aviation Clean Air and Stanford Laboratories, to test the GPS efficacy against the SARS-CoV-2 virus. The U.S. Air Force supplied multiple strains of the virus for testing that aren't commercially available. Aviation Clean Air published the results of their testing and showed that 99.4% kill rate inside the airplane within 30 minutes of exposure. The AHU would be, I think that's the Air Handling Units is what that's an acronym for. Where the GPS ion concentration was higher, their testing allowed 100% kill rate within three minutes. On the second page, it shows the efficacy of the tests with a three-minute kill rate, 10, 15, and 30 minute, depending on if it's in the air handling unit or inside the airplane. And you can see the three-minute kill rate in the air handling unit is 100%, which is where it would be in our case. It's important to note that the GPS had no involvement in that testing other than providing the equipment to the U.S. Air Force for testing. The Air Force has informed GPS that they intend on retrofitting all of their planes globally with this new technology. Also wanted to let you know that nearly all the major airlines are looking at retrofitting their planes at this point with GPS. The test results provide independent verification that GPS technology is extremely effective in killing SARS-CoV-2 or COVID virus. The results, the test results attached are the first of many that will be published over the coming weeks. So it says testimonials. It should say recent people or organizations that purchased or have gone along with using this equipment. So our recommendation is, as you're aware, the safety of our students and staff and community is paramount. This long-term investment will produce clean air for years to come, being proactive and responsible to our community's safety and our most precious asset, our children. It's a testament that our district does not take our responsibility like the price associated with anyone getting ill on our watch can't be quantified. The district has placed itself in an enviable position financially compared to others because of our hawkish resilience of our board. Administration believes that we need to act on this product now. Therefore, it's our recommendation as a core team that the board approve the infrastructure HVAC upgrades by placing needlepoint ionization systems in our operating systems at all four of our buildings. The cost may seem high, yet scientifically proven clean air that's purified by destroying up to 100% of the bacteria, viruses, and allergens in our airflow will indeed place our school district in the five-star quality that we continue to strive for. The testimonial-driven product that one could argue would be one of the greatest safety protocols the district would implement, not only for our current pandemic, but for the long-term health of our students and staff. On the surface, the overall cost of the infrastructure upgrade is $284,640. We do believe it's worth the investment. The district plans to apply this expenditure for a portion of the anticipated second federal CARES Act that we anticipate is coming later in the year. Our plan is to build the remaining cost into the overall facility and maintenance budget that we have while still keeping the overall district budget balanced at the same time. We see that the accompanying documentation, including August Winter's proposal for these services, other proposals were sought, however, we didn't get any responses. The district has a long working relationship with August Winter's, and we found them to be honest and responsive experts with a tremendous amount of knowledge and extremely professional to work with at the same time. It's our administrative recommendation for the board to approve August Winter's installation of the needlepoint ionizers in all four of our buildings at the cost of $284,640. Note that if the board does approve this, we look at having it fully operational within five weeks.
I mean, I think that perhaps Warren's, Ron kind of skipped over them, but some of the institutions that have implemented this technology are John Hopkins Hospital, Boston Children's Hospital, Houston Methodist Hospital, in addition to the U.S. Air Force, also the U.S. Army, and the White House. I believe that's been longer than just a recent one for the White House. Any discussion? Questions?
Steve?
I have one question. And maybe I missed in reading over, but will this technology...
Sandy?
Oh, I'm sorry. It looks like Pat has started. Pat, it's a little hard to hear you.
I wonder if he can type it into the chat.
No, Pat, we cannot hear you.
Yeah, okay. If you can't hear me, go ahead, Sandy.
Okay, I have just two questions. The first is, given that the installation wouldn't be completed for five weeks, do you anticipate postponing the start of school until that time? That would be one question.
Yeah, at this time, no, Sandy. We are not proposing to delay the start.
Because our current air filtration, our airflow system is sufficient to be protective?
Well, protective is a relative term. Our buildings all exceed the 40% air exchange ratio that is prescribed. Air exchange versus this type of technology are certainly two different things. And I will indicate to the board that while they've got various kill ratios from the Air Force studies, that's in a much more contained area than we would be looking at for a whole building such as our schools or the hospitals that were mentioned earlier.
All right, thank you. And Ron, I guess just one follow-up. I'm just figuring that there probably was discussion about whether or not it would be advisable to postpone and that the recommendation is not to postpone. Is that accurate?
That the recommendation won't be postponed?
That the recommendation is not to postpone, but that there was consideration or discussion about whether or not it was necessary?
Yeah, yeah. We look at this thing as a long-term investment. So even without COVID, this is going to greatly improve the air quality that we have in our buildings, and we think it's going to keep our people and our students healthier. You know, with the flu season, with allergens, it takes allergens out of the air. It'll just be all... Yeah.
It sounds wonderful. I think it sounds terrific. And my other question is, and you said this is going to be installed so at the system level. Are there any rooms or spaces in any of our buildings that are excluded from this?
Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but we believe every single solitary room in the building is going to have this air.
Yes, Sandy, I can speak to that as well. The vastness of this infrastructure upgrade, which is phenomenal, every UN event in every classroom will have this needlepoint system in it. And our major, our upgrade, our high school is a little more new. It's newer. So the systems are different, but it would be hooked into that system, the airflow exchange as well. So we believe, you know, we looked at this from a financial standpoint, but it's truly a safety standpoint. And we think about our safety protocols that we've been talking about when we had transportation. We redid our parking lots, for instance, and that was for the safety of the students crossing. We know that school shooting is, it's more likely to get hit by somebody in a car than it is a school shooter. But we also know now that this has risen to the level of one of our biggest safety need going forward. And long-term, if we can, we can literally get the federal government to supplement part of this infrastructure, it'd be a good investment long-term, we believe.
Pat there had a question. That is, will this run 24/7, 365, or only when buildings are in use?
24/7, 365. Good question, Pat. Thank you.
Following that, do we have any idea what kind of long-term maintenance expenses we might expect from something like this? Carol, did they provide you anything with that?
Well, I think I can let Matt speak better to this. He's online here. But we, only our electric bill going up, quite frankly, we chose this over the UV aspect. We knew it had a better potential. We sought out this. We didn't have a vendor come to us. We researched it ourselves and went to the market. We have, you know, thousands of emails coming a day. And sadly, you know, companies that perhaps aren't legitimate trying to sell things that we perhaps don't need. But we know that indeed that the electricity cost will probably go up slightly, but that would be it. The maintenance cost of doing this is like changing a filter every year annually. So it just becomes now a part of our maintenance protocols. But Matt, you're more sophisticated in this than I. Perhaps you can speak to that.
Sure. So a couple of things. I wanted to just speak on a few points. One very minute point, but as far as the White House, I believe it was installed over five years ago. So this is something that, you know, it's not new on the market since COVID came out. As far as the electrical, I actually think it will go down and, well, maybe the electrical cost won't go down, but the overall cost saving will be saving money because right now we have to have our outside air dampers open to bring fresh air, so we have clean air. And, but what that's doing is it's fighting the system, meaning our systems all have to work so much harder. If it's 90 degrees outside and it's humid, it's pulling in all that humid, hot air. So now our systems have to work twice as hard to try to keep them cool and keep humidity down, so we don't end up with mold in areas. So by being able to not have to have those open all the time, because this is going to clean the air, it's going to make it a lot more efficient, which means they're not going to be running as consistently. The air will still be flowing, but the chillers, the boilers don't have to be running as continuous. So we're going to have a huge energy savings, I believe. I can't give you an exact number, but I think it's going to be pretty considerable.
Okay, thank you. Sandy is asking how does monitoring the system's effectiveness work? So it's done on a room-by-room basis?
Well, so we have something called Automated Logic, where I can go into each individual room and find out how often things are running, the fan speed, if things are chilling. Pretty much, they're pretty intricate. As far as if they're doing their job, really outside of having a third-person tester, testing company come in and test them, you know, we have no 100% way of knowing. And that's why even with these, there was third-party testing, because, you know, talking to people, talking to, I believe his name is Steve Mullin on the East Coast. He's installed a ton of these. Every one of the customers that he's installed this, both commercially and residentially, said they can notice a big difference, but it's all subjective, really. I mean, you can't prove or disprove that by somebody feeling a certain way. Really, the only way you can prove it is by third-party testing.
And from that perspective, specific to COVID-19, you'd be, have to be able to take air samples and determine whether or not the virus is in the air and active, which I'm not sure that there is that capability?
I don't have that capability.
You don't? I think you did, but... I meant more mackerel.
I'd like to add, Vincent, not even looking at the COVID. During these allergy seasons right now, I used to suffer this time of year up in my classroom because we didn't have, you know, there's a fresh air coming in and it was bringing in all the allergies. Anyway, this is going to stop that for us and a lot of kids. We got more globally than just this COVID thing. This would be just a really nice thing to have for the staff and the kids that suffer from allergies. And I've heard this broad, our advertising for local homes, and it was in the valley it was being advertised. As that lady said, she wouldn't even go outside anymore if she didn't have to because she didn't take her allergy medicine anymore. So I'm hoping to see that that would improve the quality of that way for a lot of our asthma sufferers and stuff.
Right.
I think also we've had issues with mold and things at the Learning Center. And at the CEC. Yeah. So I think it will, it'll help that. And, you know, this process called agglomeration, it's interesting because it's a process that's used in a lot of different facilities, particularly in the food industry. It's used to gather bacteria and things for sanitation when they're making food. I know that because the husband sells the equipment. So the word "agglomeration" is a big, it's not something new. It's something that's been going on for a long time.
Okay, we did not know we had a board expert. Any questions for Betty?
I know. I just know the word, "agglomeration." That's a big word, Betty. That's more... I know. It's a lot of letters. I know.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move approval of this purchase.
Motion by Sandy Robinson. Is there a second? Daleph felt seconds? Any further discussion?
I mean, if I could just add one more thing that, which I kind of feel like it's a big deal, but... If I could just add one more thing that, which I kind of feel like it's a big deal, but you know, I've talked in detail with August Winters about this and I'm kind of pushing for them because I really trust them. For example, right now, as we speak, we're getting all of our water heaters for our potable drinking water in the high school redone. They gave me a bid and I almost feel like this is unheard of in today's day and age. They found out that they actually were able to get by cheaper than the bid, and they're going to credit us back between $5,000 and $10,000. And, which I think is a great testimony for them and their honesty, but with that being said, he did tell me, obviously, we have a lot, I think we have 19 air handlers alone in the high school, and then it goes on each coil, so we we have a lot of, and then UNI events in every room, but if they can get by a little less expensive, both on material and labor, they will, they will certainly charge us much less than $284 if they can.
And I can amend my, my motion, Matt, to include, because I see in the packet we got that it, the recommendation included approving August Winters installation of needlepoint ionizers in the high school, middle school, Waupaka Learning Center, and the, well, it should say Chain Exploration Center. In the amount of, maybe it's a not-to-exceed amount then, Matt?
Correct.
Okay, I'll do, it's a not-to-exceed amount of $284,640.
Okay, with the amendment to our motion, does the second still hold?
Sure.
Dale Feld, the second still holds. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manon?
Yes.
Pat Fair? Mark Polovinsky?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, Wednesday learning in 2021, 4K through 12 will all be virtual. Ron, would you like to discuss that?
Sure, we talked about that last week at our update meeting, our special update meeting. And we received additional feedback last night at our stakeholder meeting in support of this. There's a lot that's, that goes into this upcoming school year with the need to be teaching live, remote, on-demand, remote, and in-person in the classroom. Teachers have to get appropriate amount of time to prep and prepare. We're going to need time to learn schoology. We're going to need time to schedule appointments with, with our virtual learners along with our strugglers in person. So we could do all of this remotely on, on Wednesdays. That's the plan. We also have a need to collaborate together and continue our PLC work with our, our learning targets and identifying them. So it's our recommendation that we make throughout the entire district, PK through 12, a virtual learning day for those students. It's still a day of new learning. It's not a review day. It's, it's an on-demand day, but our staff would then be able to schedule specific appointments with, with students to help them with whatever their issues or struggles or the support that they need.
If I can just add to that real quickly, Ron. If students need to come in for something in particular for additional support, that would also be acceptable, or students working with our articulated agreements to Fox Valley Tech to have lab time or hands-on time. That could also be a time in the morning of Wednesday to do that. So I know it says all virtual, but we also want to make sure that we're, we're clear that we may, I mean, staff would be in the building. We may have students in the building who would sign up for time ahead of time to ensure that they have that hands-on learning time, those experiences as necessary.
Thanks, Mark. And Sandy had a question. Let's see, how will food distribution to students be handled on Wednesdays? That would be pickup. So we've worked with our food service department, and all remote learners will have that ability to pick up meals, and that'll be the same for Wednesday, for both in-person and our remote learners if they so choose.
I think we still have to stress though that that is a day of learning for students.
Correct.
And it's not an off day for students or for staff, that it's a work day yet.
Thank you, Dale.
Ron?
All right, Steve.
Ron, I did get a call from a bus driver who said they had a meeting and everything was all taken care of, and I said, no, we haven't approved anything yet. But anyway, he, this person wanted to know if bus drivers are going to be paid for that Wednesday, and I said, I don't even think it's come up in conversation that I've heard of, anyway.
Steve, I have reached out to legal counsel to get a verification on that. Initially, Carl and I, as we spoke about that question, it's, it's really a go-right-way decision if they're going to do that or not. But it's our understanding, the way the contract is written, and again, we're waiting for verification. So this isn't official, but our understanding is they're paid by the routes. And if we don't have routes going on that particular day, that the district would not be billed for that particular day either. So then it'll be a decision of how go-right-way deals with that. But I could, we could be wrong, and maybe legal counsel will say we will be billed for that.
Okay, I will just call him and tell you, tell him what you told me, and we'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on the Wednesdays?
I just have one follow-up question, and it, again, refers to food distribution. Is, are we able to provide some delivery for families that either may not have transportation accessible to them or time available during the window for pickup on Wednesdays?
What do you mean by time available during the window?
They might be working.
Okay. You know, I think some of these details, first, we have to make sure that whether or not the board is going to approve Wednesdays as being a virtual-type day as opposed to in-person. As to the food distribution, keeping in mind that we're looking at, due to the position that the county health department has taken in AB schedule, we're looking at more than just Wednesdays for food distribution. So there will still need to be discussion on how we get meals to people through pickup, through delivery, through whatever means that we might be able to do that. So it's a little more encompassing than just Wednesdays from that perspective. And so we'll have to have more discussions, but the issue right now would be more specifically the 4K through 12, Wednesdays being virtual.
Thank you.
Other discussion? I will tell you that there have been several comments, but from some people that were wishing that all of our grades would be five days a week. There are others that have complimented the way that the district has been planning to point, so, to this point. So there's a little question in my mind that regardless of how this particular item goes, we will have critics, and we will have those that are supportive. So everybody just brace yourselves because whenever the board decides with this, again, there will be those that understandably, because of work environment, et cetera, have some challenges with it.
Just one point of clarification, 4K does not have classes on Wednesdays. They're Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday school.
Correct.
All right. One other clarification.
Yes.
At our stakeholders meeting last night, Ron made it very clear that if it was the district making the decisions, that kids would be back five days a week, normal meetings, but it is his work with the health department here that is putting these constraints on the school district. Is that correct, Ron?
Exactly, yes. Thank you.
So it's not like we're making those decisions. It is the health department and not the administrative team.
Okay, so back to the issue at hand, administration is recommending that Wednesdays be all virtual for the, at least the initial start of the 2021 school year. And I say it that way because if magically COVID disappears, we will certainly be readdressing how we are handling things, or we may be readdressing how we're handling things. So with that, is there a motion before we have any additional discussion?
I will make the motion that will follow the schedule given by the administration team, that Wednesdays will be a work day for students to catch up, for teachers to deal with virtual students, our remote learning students, and for kids that need to come in to work with teachers, that that will be happening, at least for the half of the day, and then the PLCs in the afternoon.
Correct. Motion by Dale Feld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the questions. Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manon?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Mark Polovinsky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, resignation of Ann Schwellenberg.
Yes, we pulled this item from the consent agenda in an effort to create an agreement with Ann. Her resignation is after the deadline in the teacher handbook. However, in her resignation, she shared with us that her husband has, has medical, significant medical conditions, and returning to work would, could risk could risk her husband, and she decided after 43 years of excellent service to our district to retire. And so in an effort to not be precedent-setting, legal counsel advised that we enter this resignation agreement with Ann. Ann has, has read it and signed it and agreed to it, so all we need right now is the board to approve this.
Okay, with that, before any comments, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Motion by Dale Feld?
And by the, and the resignation release of claims.
Okay, motion by Dale Feld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Betty.
Sadly.
With that, as a part of the discussion, as his microphone is not working well, Pat Fair has asked me to relay as a retired teacher and a friend, thank you to Ann for her many years of dedicated service. Thousands of young people have become better parents, cooks, seamstresses, and most important, better human beings. Thank you, Ann. You are the epitome of the definition of teacher. With that, we thank all of, we all thank you, Ann. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Steve, this is Mark Polo. Yeah, I, I wanted to say when I came here to Waupaka 33 or 35 years ago, Ann was already here five years. So I went from teaching Ann the ropes of using technology and working with her throughout her career on teacher in services and into her classroom and fixing her computer when I was technology coordinator. So I got to know her quite well, and she's just a remarkable teacher, and she was a real asset to this community of Waupaka. So, yeah, thanks, Ann, for all your use of service.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank Sandy Robinson. Good work, Ann. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manon?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Mark Polovinsky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dale Feld to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy Robinson. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manon?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Mark Polovinsky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, my thanks to everyone for their participation.
One more item under C that got slid in there, Steve.
Oh, you slid it in. Okay, item C beyond, but that is not part of the current, a part of the consent agenda?
It's separate.
Okay.
I believe it is. Or am I mistaken?
Well, it's, it's listed two ways because it's actually technically under the consent agenda.
Yeah. I guess we're okay then.
Okay. With that, thank you to everyone. Thank you to all of our staff throughout the Comet family, past and present. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Feld. Is there a second? Is that you, Steve?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Hackett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in 14 minutes.